Oh, yeah.
Siri?
Oh, yeah.
I like this one's pretty cool too.
Setting alarm for six eight.
Yeah.
Isn't that cool?
Running loose on the on the street and he says it was not my turn to watch them.
You can FaceTime.
Oh, yeah. FaceTime's cool shit. Did you get two of them?
Wife and I got the iPhone. The kids got iPhone.
Really? Good.
Yeah, we got the whole five. I'm on the data. Fifty hundred minutes.
Right. I've mostly known my guess right now.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So you switched to, is that AT&amp;T or Verizon?
Sprint.
Okay.
This is our team.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. It was still over a year. He was looking at buying it.
Okay.
For buying it out.
Oh, it's a part.
So, but it's a great thing for buying it out. He's able to work with us today.
I've got a book at home. Oh, that's for the iPad. A lot of stuff's the same now.
Kids, Julie's mom and dad have got the iPad. And she today they went up to her brother's house. He's a big time.
I don't know which game it is.
He did his weddings and stuff. He hooked her up. He hooked up her iPad to FaceTime.
Oh, yeah.
Cause kids are always doing the drawing. He's got that drawing app. Guess where the?
You gotta charge them every night.
Oh, I know. It's going down.
Yeah, I'm gonna do it too. But I charge them every night.
Is that sixteen or thirteen?
Jeff's running a couple of minutes late.
I don't remember.
He said he'd be here in two minutes. I'd really like him here. Since we're talking about community development type stuff, so we just gonna watch for a couple of minutes. Not that we could do the meeting without him, but I don't think it would be efficient.
Well, we hope that October, the I O six is coming out. And we can download for free.
That's cool.
That way we can do FaceTime on the radio.
Oh, really?
Yes.
It'll do it over the three G?
Yes, exactly.
Now, do the kids do FaceTime too? What's the difference in the US and the non-US?
The only thing is right now with Siri. When the I O six comes out, they can do Siri at home.
On network.
On the network. Right now, they can't do it at all. All they can do is call them, I'll make disclosure. They can upgrade and get Siri on Wi-Fi.
Good. Yes, Siri's pretty cool.
Yes, I'm looking forward to that. The kids are excited. My one daughter remembered how I told you.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Call the August twenty first council work session to order at seven oh five. And we are without a clerk tonight, so I will be functioning as the clerk, as the mayor, and as a member of council. We call this governmental role task. Roll call, Mr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Dries.
Here.
Mr. Halter.
Here.
Mr. Hermes is excused. He contacted me earlier today. Mrs. Walter.
Here.
And Mr. Walter.
Here.
Tonight, we have two items to talk about, both involving community development. One is the home improvement piece, and I'd like to do that first, and then we'll do the community development committee initiative. So, you wanna talk about the Green Hills housing?
Okay, will do. Thank you. And yes, there's the first component of that that I wanted to get back to was the Home Improvement Repair Fund. This was the program funded through the Community Development Lock Grant Program. And the amount's fifteen thousand for the next three years, and forty-five thousand. I think it was back in June, I distributed draft. Just first want to know if there were any more comments or changes council would like to see on these. The draft in front of you does reflect a previous comment that we had during the meeting, and that was to reflect that priority would be given to projects that address code violations. So that does now state that in the guidelines. And just on your, any additional comments?
No, I just, I think I'm fine with the proposed guidelines. I wonder if it's possible if we could run a list of open violations for homeowners and make sure that they get a letter that says, you currently have an open violation. I want you to be aware that there is a program called the Village of Green Hills Home Improvement Repair Fund that you may be eligible for, and give them the guidelines with it. I think we want completion and compliance with violations. And to the extent that we can help them get that resolved satisfactorily with a grant, that'd be great. If they choose not to, we still need to get the violation corrected, but I think trying to make a little extra effort for those people might be good for everyone.
I think that's a good suggestion, and something that Tom and I had talked about earlier is to make it clear maybe under what kinds of projects, if these are related to the structure of the house. It's not landscaping, for example. So maybe call that out, so they're not living in a house for a term. Okay.
Well, it says it in the first paragraph.
It says that in there.
Oh, it was looking under what kinds of projects.
Right. And I should probably put it in the notes.
Okay. I was looking under what kinds of projects were eligible. But you're right, if it says it up there, we can just put it under both headings.
You want to add a question about I O six, estimated date of completion. Says work must not begin until you receive a notice to proceed letter from municipal manager. And then ask you not to make any data. Why do we care when they start?
Well, I think you want your money to be expended. So you mean as far as why do we require that they complete the?
Yeah, somebody's got a big project, and he sends in an application, and he goes ahead and starts doing the work, and then gets the money later.
Okay. Yeah, a couple of issues going on there. First of all, any project that gets submitted actually has to go down to the county. They do what's called an environmental review on every single one. It's usually a pretty quick thing, cause they've looked at Green Hills overall, so they just, you know, are looking, I guess they know what they're looking for, kind of quick. But until we get that approval from the county, we can't release funds or release a commitment to any particular project until it's had, has that approval. So first they have to, we have to wait for county approval, then they can go ahead and start. We care if it's done within ninety days, so the money is definitely expended in the year.
Well, again, you know, if he starts early and he doesn't get the money.
I guess we wouldn't want to set them up for failure. In other words, if someone is under the assumption that they applied and it's as good as theirs, and we find out that it's not theirs, then they can be upset that, hey, I spent money and I applied thinking that that's the same as being accepted. I would think you wouldn't want them to start until, unless you, unless we communicate to them, you're starting at your own risk.
Yeah, it can't be out of that effect, and they have so many dollars of pay, there don't see any reason why they couldn't start. I say, we don't know if it's going to be granted or not, so go ahead and then apply, and if we can get it for you, we will.
Right. But they could do that now. They could start now.
Well, but this would be a little bit of an incentive, that maybe, it's kind of like, what do you call that at the end of the?
Carrot.
The carrot at the end of the run kind of thing. You might be getting a reward if all the planets had an orbit.
Yeah, as long as they understand that it's at risk, that it's not a done deal, then, yeah, they can start.
Obviously, about in terms of, you know, like there's provisions and stipulations for those that wanna do the work themselves or part of the work themselves. And if a guy's got a big project and he can't afford to hire somebody, and it's gonna, and he can't get it done in ninety days, you know, he's only got ninety days to get it done.
To complete it after you are out.
You know, if he can start thirty days early and then get his money, you know, I don't see that's a problem, as long as there's, you know, thorough understanding that there's no guarantee you're gonna get this money.
I agree.
I can see the problem, I can see a problem if a guy starts anticipating a county one giving him the money, and then he gets halfway through, and he doesn't have any money himself, and finds out that he's not gonna get this money, that will be a problem, yeah.
Maybe one thing I can do is check to see if it's okay if we can do an extension, if approved in advance, you know, they think they're going to need more than the ninety days. Maybe extend it, you know, cause I guess I would be worried at this point that people would think, hey, it's a project I'm working on now, I'm gonna go ahead and submit that. I don't really think I'm gonna feel comfortable reviewing projects that are already underway. Yeah, I'm afraid people are gonna get some idea that they're gonna get the funding, and they may not get the funding, and then somebody's gonna misunderstand, that's what you might do. But I'm happy to check.
Well, it would be cleaner. It would be cleaner to, you know, control the start time, I guess.
Because if it's, maybe they already started, and I see your point completely, but yeah, you don't wanna hold them back if they're doing it. But on the flip side, if somebody already started something, and then say, oh, you get reimbursed with your funds, so.
At the risk of overthinking it, I would think if they already have that mindset that they're just gonna start, that they would start, you know? We wouldn't have to tell them, you've got permission to start. I think they would know. But as long as people aren't confused by it and start, hate to have a house foreclosed on because they couldn't afford the big project, they started thinking they were gonna get funds.
I just wouldn't wanna see them get knocked out of money if they, you know, go ahead and start the thing. And then there's the issue of how, who leases this, and does we lease it?
Yes.
Well, I would think some of this stuff would require a permit.
Oh, it definitely will.
Yeah.
That's another reason.
Well, that's why the permit, the permit process is a part of this too.
If the one requires.
Yeah, if somebody's painting their house, and they're doing it themselves, and they're getting reimbursed for the cost of the paint, that, I don't believe would require a permit. But if you replace the sidewalk, or.
Having porch or a deck or whatever, yeah.
Right.
Okay, I'll check on the ninety days, see if that can be extended.
Roofing of that doesn't require a permit, so.
I'm sorry?
Roofing doesn't require, new roof, gutters.
I think only if you get into new, of the wood sheeting.
Is there any kind of wording that could be, like, an extension if needed would be considered, something like that?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking to.
So they know that if someone is doing the work alone ninety days, she wins, I have to work, and I can't complete it in ninety days, but if I can apply for an extension, I could do that.
It's not ninety day, that's one of our stipulations.
Right.
Right, I think we have the flexibility to change that, and I'm gonna check with the county to be sure.
So we could do that with leasing, flexible leasing.
You're right, it does have a net date, so it's not that complex. But I hit to your point as well, the weather, you know, oh, you're not doing it this weekend.
There's a weather factor, and if it's on the weekend and the person works full time, that weekend is shot, you know, we're not gonna be able to work on the weekend.
It's nice.
Ninety days should.
It's really, it's really great that the money's available. I mean, just, I think that helps some zoning issues, helps residents, I think it's a great thing.
Well, since I'm in the process of getting a new roof put on, is there, can we waive this amount for councilmen?
I could answer that. I gotta get a new set of steps, so.
Any other comments, germane to the topic? Mary Ann, you wanna appropriate the new property?
Sure. I've finalized those, and we've got a whole packet of the information. Uh, no, we're just trying to put guidelines in place, and now we can.
It's a done deal, we're just.
Right. I got all this accounted, and we should be good to go.
Residents, can they comply for that?
Uh, not quite yet. We'll do some kind of announcement when it's time.
Maybe during a war.
Yes. Okay, the next item, I wanted to give you a status report on the, on our residential properties, to let you know where we are on that. My most recent figures, we now own sixty-three units, total units occupied and paying rent thirty-three, total vacant units right now thirty. Some general comments, obviously, you know, lost revenue versus expenses, as I've shared many times, our revenue wasn't and isn't covering expenses. Many of the units that are vacant have costly repairs, that at this point in time, we simply don't have that kind of money available to be making those repairs. We do handle all the day-to-day stuff with tenants, you know, stuffed up drains, we have one a day, it's gonna be about a fourteen hundred dollar bill, you know, things like that, day-to-day, so all those things are being covered, and that's where we try to keep the money, so we can cover those kinds of issues if we need to. But I think definitely moving towards some of our goals of homeownership, I want to have some of the properties listed on the market to get them sold. And I do have a list in the first wave of homes. I have five structures here. Three Andover, twenty-six Chalmers, sixty-seven Drummond, a multifamily, ten twelve fourteen Cromwell. Multy as in there's three townhouses, not multifamily as in apartments.
And when we talk units, this is three units?
That's three units, correct. And thirty to forty Flanders, and that's six units. So if Wendy's are sold, they'll take twelve, that'll be twelve units off of our, whatever you wanna call it, off our expense list.
Is this list part of the thirty-three that are rented, or part of the thirty that are vacant?
The thirty that are vacant, okay. If these are occupied.
Okay.
These are all vacant right now.
Of the thirty that are vacant, about how many of those are rental?
Um, not very many, quite frankly. If you do go ahead and subtract some of these, the twelve, rentable from the standpoint, can we afford the expenses that are needed to get them ready?
Correct.
Which we cannot. So in my mind, that's making them unrentable. They're not unrentable because they're unfixable, it's can't afford to be fixed.
Well, I think the question.
I just want to be clear about that.
Is, are any of these, could you rent it today? Any of the thirty could you rent today?
Uh, there's two of them that we're getting ready to, any of the thirty vacant ones. We have two that are very close to being ready to rent. They required minimal work when the individuals moved out. Typically, it's new carpeting and cleaning and painting, maybe some other odds and ends things, so we have two that are, that are gonna be private in the week.
The two ready to rent or sell?
Uh, right, although they're not in this first round to sell, because they're in multi, again, they're in townhouses that are have additional units. They each have their own little quirks. These, again, are ready. They're three, in fact, sixty-seven Drummond is actually a freestanding house, twenty-six Chalmers is individual townhouse, thirty-three Andover, these guys are ready to go. The last group, the Cromwell and Flanders, those are fixer-uppers, you know, they're not.
Whoever's going to buy has to, you understand that?
Yes.
What is the procedure, if any, if you were to sell, let's say for the space, or whatever the ones are you cannot afford to repair? Just thinking of the principle of the first loss is the best loss you got, to get rid of those. Is there any particular criteria that it could be sold by the law, or anything like that, just for somebody to totally, that has the money to redo it?
Um, yeah, and in our current list, I think we do have some of those. And each of the other ones that are involved, they are either occupied, you know, I can give you some examples, but I hesitate to name the individual ones right now.
That's alright, that's okay.
We have some single ones that we mailed one in a building of five, and it's currently occupied.
And one of that, out of the five, that it's the vacant one that is in bad condition, is that what you're saying?
Uh, well, of the vacant ones.
I'm talking about the very bad condition that are not, the preparing it for us would be an insurmountable amount of money, and whether or not somebody would come out and says, hey, I buy this five for so much, and get it out of, get it out of the management of the village. Is there anything like that, that has anybody thought about it? I don't know, Mr. Adams?
Believe me, we do have this all the time.
Yeah, well, Mr. Adams is a real estate, maybe, you know, we can use his expertise, and when that comes about, with counteroffer or anything like that, I don't know how that works, maybe I'm overstepping my boundaries here, but I'm thinking about him being a Realtor and being a member of council. If we have a problem with something that is going to be sold, or counteroffer somehow, that his expertise would be something to consider, and the situation had a fresh pair of eyes to bring something to the table in that case. And again, I'm going back to the very, very first basic principle, that the first loss is the best loss that you got. And right now, we're sitting on something there that either we can't fix, because we don't have the money, or, you know, we cannot per se sell it as a home for anybody, because it's not livable.
Okay, and a couple of things to address your concerns. First, each, each property has its little weird situations. I've looked at them in groups. The first group I've already told you about, there will be a second wave and a third wave, and four, how many waves we need to get in here and get through this. The additional thing that I wanna do tonight, we identify the ones that are now vacant, ready to go, and clean them up. I had them appraised, because I don't want us to be in a situation again where we don't really know what the value is of the property we're trying to sell.
Good.
So we have appraisals that have been done. I do wanna make a couple of comments about that, cause I've heard a lot of people, especially people who've already looked at the units, who have said, oh, that's ridiculous appraisal, they're way too high. You know, people are wanting a good deal, they're looking for homes that are foreclosed, but the foreclosed value isn't necessarily the appraised value of a house. So, you know, we have appraisals that are based on actual sales, not foreclosures, and I feel good about that. I don't wanna be responsible for perpetuating this foreclosure value through all of our properties, so I feel good that we have the appraisals.
And let me just comment on that. It's a disservice to the other homeowners of this community.
Absolutely.
If we, if we're driving the market down.
Yeah.
It hurts homeowners, it hurts current landlords.
And the matter, the fact of the matter is, there are other homes here in Green Hills that are not, like, people sold that cheap, so, you know, that's a good thing. So anyway, our appraisals reflect that, and then reflect the actual market sales.
Are we put into the appraisals? Are we put into the appraisals of those properties?
Sure, yes. I have my own book.
Okay, and what is the discrepancy between the appraisal and the sale price, and the people having about that? Is there any way that perhaps Mr. Adams can?
Okay, I can finish, and we've had conversations on this. There's a real estate agent that I would like to list these with, you know, Mr. Adams cannot, because he's on council.
Correct.
Okay, and I know we have other old pages in the community who also cannot, they have a conflict of interest. So, I looked for several criteria in the individual that I talked with. First, you know, obviously have a familiarity with our market, but no connections internally, which is a good thing. He does not, seeing as Mike Johnson with Hough Real Estate, they apparently have extensive home sales nationally. He apparently had more closures than anybody, he has certain years, you know, he's very experienced, he's got residential and commercial development experience and sales experience. Remember that we're contracting loans on contract-by-contract basis, it's not like we're saying, oh, here's all our properties, you know, as we have them, if we're satisfied with him, and Mr. Adams was sharing with me, even though it might be six month contract, if we're unhappy with him, in two months, we could technically dump him, but I don't really expect that to happen. I loved his thought, you know, I've shared with him that we have a big task, a big plan, things that we're trying to accomplish, and he seems to wanna work with that. So I appreciated his ideas, and I would like to go ahead and list these properties with him. This is professional service, so I don't have to publicly advertise it. Also, just so you know, he proposed a two-tier commission for homes that might sell forty thousand or less, for example, the Chalmers, these twenty-six Chalmers, who are definitely still growing, that's one that's been gutted. Just a flat rate of two thousand dollars on that for a fee, and if one home selling over forty percent, over forty thousand, it would be a five percent, which was the lowest that I got. Two percent going to help, and three percent going to buyer's agent. One of the things that, which is good, that three percent, I guess, being higher for the buyer encourages them to come in and to get a higher amount.
Yeah, the standard rate's usually six to seven percent, so five percent.
And then the other, the other concerns that you have, you know, once you have people, as we did in the other example, that I believe you're probably thinking of, there were two real estate agents involved, they should have been handling all the haggling that was going on. And so once this person's in place, they can handle all that, and that will free us up to not be getting involved in those kinds of issues. So, the appraised value may not necessarily be the listing value, but it gives us some knowledge.
To get started. And it's a considerable, I don't know, Mr. Adams, is it considerable to say that if we raise a little bit on the appraised value, we choose to do that or not, it's still okay without giving it away to go below that appraised value? Would you think that it would be alright, not just to give it away, but to negotiate to go as below the appraised value? We don't have to sell at the appraised value.
No.
We get a point in this price.
Okay, so it's a point of negotiation, the appraised value could be a point of negotiation, up or down?
Yeah, the problem is when you go up, and I'm not, I haven't seen the appraisals yet, but if you have a full-blown appraisal on one set property, like FHA, the appraisal stays with that property for a number of months.
I see.
And no one will touch it or try to go higher than that.
But in order to sell, and you could considerably go lower.
Sure.
Like, let's say it's five or ten thousand dollars lower than that, just to sell it, it's something that is feasible?
Yeah, the appraisal is.
It's not a fixed amount.
Opinion of how.
Okay.
I do wanna comment on that appraisal, though. There were, I've had a number of people look at that appraisal and would stay with it, and actually, I'd see one discount going right now, which is a good thing, and when that's done, we'll have an appraise. But there were a number of technicalities that could have been argued on that appraisal.
Yes, sure.
Like three or four different ones.
Yeah, that's the rule of thumb, they may stay with the property.
I think it's called waiver, name, waiver or something like that.
Get a second opinion as well, and then kind of prove your case with that, but it's, that's a great thing to have, you have a good idea.
I think so. I feel like we're ready, we'll have professionals dealing with that, and, you know, I think they do have to bring every offer to us.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, right now, I guess we don't have any money, the levy's up near, what might happen with the levy?
As far as how much money we're gonna have next year, but it's, it's, do we know, do we have a prudent handle, I suspect we do, do we have a prudent handle on what, how much it's gonna cost to make these, these questionable properties livable? And I, I mean, what would we consider to be, I know if we don't have the money, it doesn't really matter how much we take and what the payback would be, but let's say if the payback would be six months, a property, you can see, you know, six, thirty-six thousand dollars is what it takes to get a place fixed up, and you're running for six hundred fifty, seven hundred a month, after you get it fixed up, in six months, you got your money back. Is there some point at which we look at a property and say, okay, maybe, maybe we gotta go ahead and?
If you jump thirty-six thousand into it, it's not, it's.
Thirty-six, what, three thousand six hundred thirty-six?
Actually, thirty-six thou, thirty-six.
Yeah.
Thirty-six dollars, yeah.
And that was considered, but again, it's the cash flow, the month-to-month cash flow, the ongoing bills that are there at the same time.
I know we don't have the money.
That kind of investment is there, and I, I have been feeling, and I think councilors agreed, that we, I mean, it's time to move forward with our goal, which was the homeownership portion of it, and I, I think, you know, the market appears to be at least stable, and it seems like a good time to start that effort, and see if we can, you know, I think of it as like bleeding, if we can stop some of the bleeding and hold around for a while here with these buildings.
Well, and a suggestion I would make is, I think a way to kind of get around that sometimes is to offer a lease purchase or land contract, to use round numbers. If you have a lot that's, one of the townhomes, it's fifty thousand dollars, let an investor buy it, we still get our fifty, they don't have to pay the money yet, they fix it up with their own money, sell it for a hundred, who cares how much money they make on it, just as long as we still get our fifty. But that way, they were able to rehab the property, it didn't cost them any money out of their pocket, so that's a big advantage for them. There wasn't the initial fifty thousand they had to come up with. So they just rehab the property, made money on it, but we still got what we wanted.
And so would that be a tool in Mike Johnson's belt, or would he not be interested in?
Um, possibly, yes, and I think it's, we can talk about that as well, but sometimes if it's not a sale, I would leave that open as well. But sometimes if it's not a sale, I would leave that open as well. If he, if he brings the buyer that's going to do that, then certainly. But I, I think as council and as the village, we wouldn't turn down any ideas.
Right, but I mean, it seems like we have to plant that seed with him, that option, so he has it.
Right, yeah, and we have already had extensive conversations on that. Because I, and I think he understands that there's, there's some, like, you know, fando or that somebody can just buy that in and rent it. But then there's going to be the other ones, like the Wells Fargo financing, that can finance the acquisition and the renovation. And, and he has, excuse me, experience with those programs, and knows people who do those, you know, and he works with them on a regular basis. So I think he can lead them directly to, to those tools to help make it go for themselves.
One of the other issues I, concerns I have, I want us to have to raise the number of homeownership, no doubt. I think it's, it's critical. But are we, on these two of these properties, requiring that?
Well, as a matter of fact, that was one of the things that he threw out to me that I liked, is that we could list the properties to consider owner occupied for a limited period of time. You know, like if you want to say for the first, I don't know, six months, for the first six months, we'll only consider owner occupied. However we want to word that, we can do that.
You can do that.
Apparently so. You put it for a limited period of time.
But on the flip side of that, I want to raise the number of homeownership. But some of them are just going to be rentals, and I would rather we got them off of our books, even if it was another landlord.
I agree.
And I think the, the thing that, we're always afraid that we're going to get a landlord of sorts, and you know, it falls in the wrong hands, so to say. The way I think to help prevent that is, is just, you know, the code.
The code, the first, the code.
Code enforcement.
And also, that's where the price issue comes in, too. If you drop it down to nothing, you've got a better chance of someone that is in that mode, so...
Well, I don't think down to nothing, you may have...
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but I think you have...
And a negotiation, it also affects surrounding values, if I understand that correctly.
It does, but I think our success of getting these sold will raise if we can open it up to somebody that's going to buy it and rent it and make cash flow of money on it, rather than they're going to move in and to live there.
How many have we sold in the last twelve months?
One. You know, this is a brand-new initiative, and I was the lucky one, we got one of our existing tenants who wanted to buy one.
So one in twelve months?
That's correct, yes.
I've got a couple of comments and two questions. One comment would be, I've been a strong proponent of when we sell one of these things, the cash that we get out of it doesn't go into the general fund, it gets earmarked for payment of the bond. So I would hope everybody is still on board with that, if not, maybe we need to go back and discuss that. Two, can you tell us a little bit about how you chose Mike Johnson? Did you interview other people? I mean, you spoke to his, like, his qualifications, and you liked his ideas, et cetera. But did you talk to three different people? Have you worked with them before?
I've talked to two different people, first back up. I've talked to a lot of people about who would they recommend, okay? A lot of them came back to him, so I thought, wow, this is good. I had a couple other suggestions, talked to one on the phone, talked to two on the phone. But I liked him the best, I brought him in and talked to him, and went into it in a little bit more detail. So, and again, I think if for some reason we don't like him, we will be able to make a change. But just, just the initial reaction, you know, and how receptive they are to what our goals are. And you know, he had done what I liked of all of them, he was the only one who had done a lot of homework. I mean, he had already run off the others' information on all of our properties, had driven by them, and...
Did he help you select the six?
No, you know, as, as working through these, there were, those were just the obvious ones for us to start with. They were, people were moving out of them, they were reasonably okay conditioned to be selling at this point. These were just ready. If you picked any of the other ones, I could be giving you reasons why those weren't on that first list. But once we get these up and going, I'm going to shift my focus to these other ones.
Okay.
You know.
So these things are part of the third.
Yes.
And my other comment was, as you and I've had a conversation, and I've had somebody contact me, and I know the village office on twenty-six Chalmers. Before we list it with somebody, does it make any sense to save the two thousand dollars? To say, "We're going to list it for somebody," or should we? I guess, I guess we ought to go ahead and list that because, because that way, we put that in the hands of somebody that's going to do it.
Right, and I think it'd be a bigger, a bigger audience of buyers to be looking at it.
Yeah, right, okay.
My limited experience in real estate, I bought most of our houses just directly from the other, I'd say most of our houses, the two of them. But I sold my mother-in-law's house when she passed away, and found out that the guy we really liked, that really impressed us, that was, you know, really, really put together and smooth and everything else. Turned out, he was a closer kind of guy. He was a, he was a guy who lists properties. He's not the guy that sells them. He's really good at convincing people to list properties with him. But once he listed, he really, he didn't do anything. And so, you know, I've talked to other people, and I've talked to David about this, but there seem to be two types of realtors. People go out and just get listings, and these are a lot of the guys I think you see in the millionaire clubs and all these other, get these awards just because they go out and get listings. But they're not the guys that sell them, other people sell them, you know, we need somebody that's going to work to sell these places.
The closer the...
He seemed very hands-on, that was one of the things I liked about him.
And part of that, I think it's very skewed in that they do do a lot, a listing agent as far as selling a home. Last check was eighty-seven, eighty, eighty-eight percent of homes. Have a co-op Realtor where you come to buy it, you have your own Realtor representing your best interest, this Realtor represents the village's best interest. But the listing Realtor still did a lot to sell the home. When things come up, things arise with the contract, appraisal, financing, all of those things, they're, they're still working at that. But if you looked at it just from a sales standpoint, it looks like, you know, the buyer's agent sold that, he didn't sell it. But that's because it's always best that as a buyer, you have someone represent your own interest. But I, I think that on the listing side, he will still do a whole lot. Chances are, he probably will not represent the buyer, though. So it may look like Mr. Smith from Emax brought the buyer. But it's going to be his marketing, it's going to be everything that he does to attract people. Really, as a listing agent, is to try to get as many people in the house as possible.
So these properties are three handover, twenty-six Chalmers, sixty-seven Drummond, ten, twelve, and fourteen Cromwell, thirty through forty-five.
Is there a projection of the next six, when may that be?
Um, I, I do have that, I don't have it up here with me. I'm downstairs, I already outlined my different groups, like next week, so if you're interested, stop.
Okay.
So you've listed all these with Mr. Johnson?
When, no, I want to talk to you about first. And, I mean, it sounds like it's okay, I'm going to go ahead and proceed with that.
Yeah, I don't think it takes a motion or anything, but I think it's, I think it's just good courtesy for you to be talking to us.
Right, because it's a huge step, and I just decided on it, so... The next piece, though, I do want to mention to you, we have land also. All right, are we wanting to move at this time on getting an appraisal on our vacant land? The vacant land that I'm identifying here is only the parts up to Wood, actually. And you can pass this around, there's, you know, an odd parcel there, and then a little bit more onto Wood, back by the garages. That's, it's vacant right now. I could have it appraised, you know, do the step-by-step thing again, do appraisal, if we got listed, see what we get in the way of, that would probably attract somebody who obviously could build more than just one unit on that acreage.
How big is it?
You know what, I wish I would have brought acreage, but I know...
What is the, what is the size of it?
Yeah, I apologize, I can bring it up. I'm going to guess, I don't know, that's probably only about four acres, area that's near you, you know, I need to guess.
Oh, the Tombers Court?
Uh, the, uh, or despite the wood there, three acres, perhaps?
It qualifies to be a PUD, so it's over one acre, I don't know if it's quite two, are you including the garages?
Yeah, I'm including the garages.
It might be about two.
Yeah, all right, I agree. And then there's another piece to the, that could be an infill there as well, so. I just throw that out, it's another possibility, if we want to, you know, I don't know, we want to just sit on some of this land, or if we want to start moving towards redevelopment.
I'm more comfortable sitting on land that doesn't have, has minimal ongoing expense versus...
So true.
Well, really, for me, I think the land costs you nothing to list it. I mean, if somebody comes in and says, "Yeah, I'd like to build four houses," or whatever it is, I would... It doesn't cost a thing to list it, so I would be fine with that. My only concern would be, since we do have that land, if we have a unresolved mind, and we want more single-family homes, then that would be important as to how we would want to sell that. If we sell it as just one piece of land, you can build an apartment there, an apartment complex if you want, or do we want four different homes, or, that would be my only concern.
I think that's a good point, the strategy, whether, you know, single dwelling versus apartment building. Is, because this is your only opportunity, so you could sell it in sections to have some say versus someone coming in buying.
Well, we have to pay, have that subdivision surveyed, subdivision, do you have that?
It's all about that, yeah.
Right now, it's small, it's like one big lot.
I'm, I'm fine with the one parcel that there was a house on that's up from the court. I think we need a little bit more of a cohesive plan than just shooting off the cuff here at work session about...
Oh, absolutely, yes, I want you to be thinking about it.
Yeah, we want to know, right.
Definitely, and the next piece that I want you to be thinking about, too, there are demolition funds available. And I think we do have a couple of properties that might be candidates, but again, I'm just throwing this out so you can be thinking of it. I think our first step, and I am referring, I'm talking about the apartment buildings. There are sixteen units total there, the first step, I think, is for us to inspect those buildings again to determine their potential for renovation.
Where are those located?
Those are...
Gabriel and Cromwell.
They're on Cromwell, thirty-two to forty-six Cromwell, forty-eight to sixty-two Cromwell. They're one-bedroom apartments.
Thirty-two to forty-six Cromwell?
Thirty-two.
Correct, and then forty-eight to sixty-two, the two buildings that kind of face each other.
I do like the idea of having like an inspector go in.
Right, so we have a thorough, thorough understanding of what it would cost. Are they able to be, and at what price, and then do we renovate it? So I'm going to get started on that information. We might have some other buildings, too, that are similar, that we might need those inspections for. But these would be the ones I'd like to start with, because they're the biggest, they are also a huge expense for us. I know, again, I hear, like, why aren't we renting our one bedrooms? So there's one bedroom, we have some pretty hefty costs associated with fixing them. That's why we're not renting them.
And we all know those buildings.
Yes, we do.
Good.
Okay, so that's where we are.
So with the vacant land, we want to, maybe, where do we go from here as far as? I agree, we need, this is our chance to, if we want to try to shape that area before we can vote. But, and I think, once we've established that, I think it's going to be a part of that.
Yeah, I guess, maybe the next step would be to get some ideas from the guy from Huff, helping with the name.
Johnson.
Mike Johnson. And have, you know, Von, come to us with, you know, a couple of options as to what we can do, you know. Do we want to try to get that bigger piece in the hands of somebody to develop it? To do a PUD, to, you know, what are our options, and, you know, what are the recommendations?
I love that we would get that from a Realtor, obviously, though. I think it's more what we as a village, where we want to have.
Like this, single family versus multi, you know. Up till now, I guess I have felt we wanted to get a single family.
Yeah, I would, that would be my preliminary vote, because I think we want versus...
It looks like on this map, there's a black line, there is, there is potential...
I say something before I walk out of here. You're talking about buildings that are in a historic district. You've invited the federal government to come in and look at giving you national historic landmark status. What you're talking about with demolitions and development without looking at historic infill, you're wasting everyone's time.
But I know the reality of dealing with these buildings, I think we need to know the condition because they are our expense right now.
Absolutely, nobody said that we would ignore.
Absolutely not, so. And, you know, having that data, right, having the data for the renovation is going to be good information, too, if we try to sell them as is. I mean, somebody's going to look at that and not even know what their expenses, again, the more answers we can give a potential developer, the more likely they are to want to do something.
And I didn't in any way disregard any, the historic part of it.
I don't figure that's how I would record you.
Hold on a minute, I need to start to ask, are these separate, divided into lots now? What are these black lines we can hear these numbers?
Those were the previous, yeah, it's probably made up of multiple parcels right now.
Okay, so it is divided somewhat now, although there would be no access, you know, these one to this one. This, you know, say if they're already divided up, and if they're suitable, building now, maybe just... I'm still thinking about what those UC kids did, you know, some of those ideas. Well, if you get somebody to, maybe make a really good deal on this big lot here. Especially this little piece back in here, what do you got to do with that?
Is that garage still there, is it down?
It's still there, and it's in very bad shape.
So we own half of that much?
I believe it's, I thought there were two that faced each other, but then there's a little offshoot that, I don't, I don't know what the difference is. We don't know the other end of it, but no, I think both of the buildings we own. Does anybody else know? I'm pretty sure they face each other.
I just wondered, you know, if these are inside, if I had, maybe these can be single families.
I don't think it's ours, I'm the one that...
Yeah, I think that's just showing these parcels.
Why's it?
That was torn down.
There's nothing like that, that's right, that's just one.
Right, that's vacant.
Yeah, yeah, they're both vacant right now, one is just showing the units that used to be there.
Use those other ones.
Yeah, right there.
Well, I, you know, bottom line is, they're sitting there empty, we need to do something with them. And I don't think we should ignore, I don't think anybody had any attention, ignoring the historical considerations. But bottom line is, we got to do something with them, we can't just sit there and go on.
Right, sooner or later, we have to start this conversation, so I don't want this dinner now.
Well, and it's... Especially maybe for me, relatively, it would be good to know if there's certain buildings that have historical significance, if there's somehow an indication, because I think, I don't know, I don't know which ones are and which aren't. It doesn't mean it would change the outcome, but it would be good to know what's at stake versus, here's this house, and that's...
Certainly, in the conversation, we've engaged, as I said, or as part of what we did in zoning code, we've done with other historic issues, we certainly would have a part of the conversation.
Absolutely, in fact, I'm, I've taken steps already to try to identify developers who have worked exclusively in historic areas, so it's not something that's...
I'm not going to...
Quite honestly, if it gets down to it, and we have to choose between some historical considerations and making something happen with this property, and either selling it, or, you know, and it'd be to do, to do this, in my opinion, a historical initiative would cost more money than we have to spend. That's a no-brainer, as far as I'm concerned, you know, we're, we got a property that's sitting there, it's not generating any revenue, that's costing us property taxes, just the cost of the tax burden. So we need to do what we have to do to make these properties either saleable, or livable, or tear them down, or whatever. You know, they get, if they're not going to be revenue producers, they got to go away. I'm sorry, this is, I mean, we gotta, I mean, this from a business perspective.
I, I understand that, and I'm just saying that, for me, it'd be nice to indicate what is what, so that if they need a little more scrutiny and questioning, we, it's not just a list of addresses for me. Um, maybe I should already know that, but I, I don't. Um, in some cases I do, but not in all cases do I know what's historical, what's not, and. I might come up the same place as everybody else, but just wanted, wanna know what I'm looking at.
If somebody wants to buy those, and donate it as a museum, and equip it with period furniture, and let it sit there empty, I have no problem with that, if that's what they wanna do, that ain't gonna happen. And if it's not gonna happen, we need to tear them down, or get, or get somebody to do that.
When we're, as we've talked about, um, properties and, uh, especially the west side of Wind Road, um, have you had any conversation with Otter Hill about, um, building out the rest of the PUD, maintaining the property, do you have ongoing contracts?
Not, not as ongoing as I would like, but we're gonna be meeting soon.
Okay.
Is that a meeting, is that a meeting with Otter Hill that anybody can attend to you from council?
Um, well, actually, I was just gonna give a one-on-one meeting with the lady who heads it up, I've talked to her a couple times, and.
Also, it's a community development function, so, I, I mean, I'm fine with you being proactive, but often you're proactive in other people's court, and so, you know, I, I, I don't know, I just have a problem with you functioning as a community development chair and you're not. So, but, but I, it doesn't mean we're not open, and I'm not open to hear input, but it's, it's not falling under that jurisdiction in my, my opinion.
A committee's role is not to run anything.
Right.
Committee's, any committee's role is to make suggestions to council, and council takes action. And there are things that council does, and there are things that the manager does. And to me, this pretty much, I mean, the discussion is appropriate with council, but it's Ivan's responsibility to rent these properties and make something happen in these properties.
And if they're not rentable, tell us, hey, they're not, and here are three things we can do with the property, or not with the property.
I think she's got to be the point on this, I agree with that.
Yeah.
That's all I get.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes, I have two things for community, did you have some?
No.
From the advisor, advisor role, I've got, um, from design beautification, I've got some things I'd like us to consider taking action on. Uh, I'm open to suggestions on how to handle this, but this is my first stab at it, and let me give a couple. There's two there. Uh, we've identified different areas as far as design beautification, and this is also leading up to preparation for our seventy-fifth, I wanted to mention that as well, and, um, what we've got is, the Village Corner is a key, almost the face of our community. Shopping Center area is another key to, um, to design beautification as we prioritize and break things out. The Wynton Corridor, very important for the whole thing, I know that kinda covers those other two, but, um, that, as people travel to and from, north and south of Wynton, parks, pool, golf course, that, that kind of thing. So I've put together a form, um, and this might evolve over time, and these are some of our initial projects that we would like to dive into, kind of picking the low-hanging fruit. The, the first one is the cleaning the municipal building sign, and I don't know, does anybody know if that's granite, or wood material? I need to, I need to get. Yeah, it looks like granite, I need to take a closer look at it. I couldn't even clean this in Photoshop, I had another picture where I was trying to find the website, and every time I tried to lighten it up, and there were enough streaks on it that it was a challenge. Uh, so, give you an idea, that's, you know, addressing the Wynton Corridor. Uh, as far as resources, that's TBD, uh, it's, it's a key to our entry point, and also it's surrounded by nice flowers, and it just is due for being cleansed, and, um, some consideration needs to be given to the material, the best way to clean it. I, I don't wanna overdo it, but this is one of those things, I know that we pressure washed our back patio, and now it's cracking like crazy. Might not be the same thing, but we wanna be careful on how we go about cleaning this.
I bet David Moore would know that material.
Yeah, I mean, if it's granite, it probably can take it, but we're, as a committee, we're trying to look at it, and, and from different points of view, like, what's the longevity, what's the price, you know, what's the value of doing something like this? And don't wanna make a bigger thing than it is, but if it can be pressure washed, fine, if it has to be hand scrubbed, I thought we would contact a couple companies, like Monument Companies, on how they clean, see if they had any suggestions, and get any learning on, on doing that. And so that's one of the first things we're interested in finding out. That one, I'll probably have more information, if there's a cost, if it's a nominal cost, you know, like a hundred bucks or something, I don't know, I'll bring it back up again, but if it ends up being a bigger figure for some other reason, I, I kinda doubt it, um, then I'll, I'll bring it to the table again.
If, if it's a few hundred dollars, I don't think it comes to council, I think the manager just says, we're rolling.
Alright. Then, uh, the next one is, there's a set of bushes, one is a lighthouse bush, they're overgrown. As you turn in from Wynton to Farragut, it blocks the view of the community building and the gazebo, and they're kind of out of, you know, out of control, I guess I would say. There was a plan done a while ago by Neil, and I walked around with him, Neil, um, and, with Neil, and I, this was just well-done. Now, everything on this plan is, you know, some of it is ambitious, it would be great to have it happen. I don't see a weak link in, in the whole series, but one thing he has is a grouping, a canopy, um, by the gazebo. Uh, also, the corner that you see there, which is the southwest corner, is a great place for community trees. The trees are all there, uh, a couple of the oak trees have very low hanging branches, so the goal would be to take out those two bushes, and that opens up the whole view to the community building and the gazebo, which otherwise is blocked and doesn't look as cared for. That's, that's something we would like to do, and he also felt that we could get help, um, free volunteer help from Delhi if we needed it to, to clear that out. So there, the cost, there wouldn't be really a cost associated with that change. Another thing on the, found out today, uh, that this is already on the list, there is a dead branch that's over the walkway, I think it might be over the benches, well, I'm not sure, uh, it doesn't look good, and, you know, we'd like to get it out of there, and it's already slated to be gone, so that's almost like a no-brainer.
There were some branches of that tree already down.
Oh, were there?
Yeah.
And then, uh, and we have an extensive list, uh, some of it, you know, falls in the realm of, um, you know, the, um, shopping center property, but we thought we'll start where we can. Uh, one of the things here is why not have, especially since we're redoing the parking lot, this, uh, the base of the Cincinnati Bell telephone that's in front of the Maristop, and the sign is really fat, faded and stuff, and I think we could at least make a call and see if we can get that, um, taken care of and changed out. But that's just, so that's how I'm.
Is there a payphone there that works?
It is a payphone right above. It's out of the woods, we can't change into a cave.
I actually see people using it, don't you?
Well, you know, honestly, and the chief would be a better person to have this discussion with. Sometimes I wonder who's using payphones and what they're using them for.
That's true.
And.
But, yeah, I, that's a tough thing, I mean, there might be misuse, but then on the other hand, maybe there's somebody that really needs it too, and I don't know how that shakes out, but.
I wonder, wait, what percentage of people have a cellphone in their pocket?
It's probably thirty-eight percent. Yeah, I, I wonder too, um, at one time, when cellphones were just starting to go to vogue, phone companies were selling the payphones, so people would actually own the payphones and own the coins going through them, and I, I wonder if Cincinnati Bell in fact even owns it.
That's true.
So find out ownership would be one thing, and then how do we make a decision, a, a good decision as far as asking that to be removed altogether versus updated?
Well, is that a, is that a shopping center property, you know, there ain't much to say about, do we?
Well, um, I don't know, I don't know, so, I'm not sure how that works.
Mr. Hutton, but I own the payphone for all I know.
Yeah.
But, I, I think it's a, I think it's been identified by this group as something that doesn't add value to the aesthetics of our community, and so, I, I guess, I guess those things that we just mentioned are probably things that need to be looked into. Can we take any action, and even if we can't, are there any zoning infractions, or, you know, do we have requirements for keeping things painted and maintained? It may be violation, so maybe the building inspector would be first.
So talk to the building inspector on zoning. And then, and maybe, I thought I was picking the hanging fruit, but maybe this is much higher hanging fruit than I expected. I just wanted to start to.
I like the, I like the ideas that this group has come up with, and, and it's kinda funny, the municipal sign, I saw it the other day, and sometimes when you see something every day, it's part of, part of the scenery, and I looked at it, oh, good job.
Somebody asked, was it Ted, I forget who, was it about Mark Wardhouse, was that you, was asking me about that?
No, not about the sign.
Oh, no, Nick Brown, Nick Brown was telling me that there's some group that wants to come through and, and tour, and he was suggesting they tour the Mark Wardhouse, but he said, what does that look like? The last time I was at the, oh, first floor was kind of original and very nice, and had a nice dining table, but I don't know, is Alex taking over the first floor too? Do you know?
I, as far as I know, but, yeah, I, I thought that that, do you know, Carrie would have known, I, that was like August, this is last weekend, I think, when they had that historic walk that we talked about.
Yeah.
So I think we're going to have the Mark Wardhouse on that.
Yeah, Nick said something to me.
We took down with Terry Choyne, so I don't, don't really know anything about it.
Okay, that just popped in.
So, uh, Mr. Halter, did you have, uh, are you the one that put the banners?
For?
On the shopping center there, they have some nice banners there, okay. I just noticed those banners the other day.
They're from our.
They call out the restaurants.
For Green Hills, no?
Right, the Green Hills, yeah, those are probably ours.
Yeah, I just, I, okay, they said clean, and they were saying like it was just clean there, something, yeah.
That's, I mean, that's another thing, I mean, we've got a list, and whatever, I'm hoping we bring more to the table, like the flag, and what we're doing with that, and the street signs, we have to be thinking about those for the seventy-fifth, and get those ordered. Um, there's, there's a long list, but we'll start shopping at these, and.
Street signs.
The.
Green and white, I think you were talking about that, right?
Those have to be addressed, and they're being painted, but what, what we're gonna do with the signs is, that's the low-cost thing to do right now, is at least, there's some that are driving me crazy, I wish I, wanna get those taken care of, I know that it offered to get some paint.
If you, if you give us the paint, or tell us what kind of a combination it is.
Right, well, well, there's.
We need, we need to know the color of the paint, I mean, it's green, there's all kinds of shades of green.
No, we have five gallons of paint, it's not a, we have the paint, it's just a matter of me getting a gallon bucket and getting it to you, and.
And assigning the folks, yeah.
Right, right.
And we consider replacements.
Well, that's also on the list, but right now also, if you haven't noticed, I'm trying to stain the, since I have no budget, the, uh, low to no budget for starters, and we do have some rather, especially for the seventy-fifth, um, significant things on, on our plate that we think would be really good for the community, that will require a budget, uh, but we wanna be a little bit farther down the path in getting cost, and knowing what we're dealing with, and how, how viable they are.
The fan, the street signs can just really change.
Oh, it is, we just, just like the trash cans make a big difference and that kind of thing, it's, it's huge. But, um, we'll keep bringing stuff forward, and if this format works, then.
Just don't pass the paint cans out December twentieth.
And when?
It's not gonna work, it's a non-starter.
No, it's, it's, I, it may need to, paint, uh, they need to get out in the next two weeks if I can help it, so.
Anything else?
Jeff?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, we were, there was a request that came in from Terry Sokol, and it is, they're having a Wynton Wood City School book drive. They asked us to participate and sponsor, and I asked what does, uh, what sponsorship responsibility is, what do they include? It's, and it was pretty simple, promote it to the public, set up a couple of locations where the public could drop books. Uh, they can also drop that in any of the schools, Key Club will take it from there. Uh, let me see if I can give you a little more information. When, September all month, books will be distributed in October, let's see if I can find the address. There's a number of groups.
My wife's out of town, I can get you some books if you can.
I know, I've got a couple that donate as well. Uh, they're trying to, the goal is to collect three thousand five hundred books, one for every child in the district, so, and they're collecting all over, but, um, I, I thought it would be a good thing for us to help out, we're pretty, pretty low investment from our standpoint. We'll have to talk about maybe some good locations.
Community building, school district, don't.
There probably is one there already. And incremental locations, but that's all I.
Um, the only other item is, any other matters that anybody has, so if you got one, what is it?
I've got a couple here, um, there is, um, a conversation has been going on, that there were some people going around town, painting signs, uh, for the door of the house, and they're running away with the money. I think that the police may need to know about that.
I told the police about when they came to my house.
Okay, and then the second one, the second one on Sunday, it struck me as odd, as I was driving around, there were two women, I mean harmless enough, but also ringing doorbells with some kind of papers in the front and making notes, and something that is out of sequence like that, I don't know, I felt weird about it, so.
Did you get to talk to them?
Uh, no, I was driving, I was going through there, and I was going towards the church, the mass, and.
I had one recently, it was political leanings, they're, they're.
Okay, it was on Drummond, uh, towards the end, that's when I saw them, because I went through the back like that, so, okay.
I, I guess my thought would be, if, if you're unsure about something, call the non-emergency police number, and just say, you know what?
Well, we have no.
Whoever answers, they just.
We have no signs of no soliciting or something, so I think, you know, we don't have a time for leaving, and I felt funny about, you know, ask what are you doing, and, and, you know.
They, they are supposed to have a registration with us, we don't license them in any way.
But this was Sunday, and so, yeah.
Somebody at the PD should have been, they would have been able to look up.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be more watchful of that, those two things. The next thing is, um, as of now, um, I, I think we, we might want to put in the paper, um, the fact that there are still full copies of the zoning document at the library from Perusal, and there are also one here in the municipal building. And Miss, uh, Mrs. Kober, if there is need of additional copies, please bill me, I'll pay for them. I'd rather have the citizens have a copy to read, because it, it just so happened, two different people at Kroger's requested something like that, and there might be more, and, uh, I, I personally feel better with a, with a written form to make notes, and I maybe I can make a Xerox or something, maybe they don't have one line to, to look at it.
Tom Webster, it's in the library.
These are people who have no.
I know, I know, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to take away from what you're saying, I just, I just wanted to make it.
Yeah, they said they didn't have, when they would go home, they have no internet.
Sure, sure.
So, uh, if there, if you think that there might be some other additional needs for it, run a bill me.
Okay, well, we can have, we have multiple copies, we asked, um, the county to provide more.
Okay, I took one to the library today, an additional one there, so, just to make, you know.
It's only seventy-five dollars a copy.
I would, I would like three copies.
I was, I was going to go with Krogas. The problem is that my copy, I already have one. So, you know, I did a clean one to run some shoes because it would not be appropriate, so...
I don't remember. But I got the two printers, so bam, bam, bam.
Yeah, just go get that, so we'll be doing hands and then somehow I made paper maybe a little notice to say, you know, there are, Mr. Merle told me to run with it at the last meeting and I said I was going to take care of it. So maybe just, I don't know if I should put an advertisement on it or something saying copies available at the library and, you know, I don't know if I should do that or if it goes into a regular...
Opening in an article.
Okay, okay. So at least that would be, and there, maybe we can repeat it on, on September when it's on the way across as well. Okay, and then, um, are, are we going to have, um, the meetings, I, there are council meetings with their public meetings and, you know, for the, September the 12th and the
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Are those going to be a way across?
Is your council meetings, you want them all way across?
Yeah, I, I think that'd be better. Let me, let me just make a clarification. Every council meeting is a public meeting.
Okay.
Every public hearing is a public meeting. Every public meeting is not a public hearing. So, like, this is a public meeting, but it's not a public hearing where we take testimony.
Correct, but the September the 12th will be?
Both September the 12th and we are going above what is required by having a second public hearing. And we have consistently said, if you cannot make either one of those, send us something in writing so we may consider what you are suggesting, questioning, promoting.
And in vain, I don't think we should wait as council until the 12th to debate this ourselves. I think we ought to maybe send something out to the council people and say, if you haven't read it, I've gone through it one time. You did go through it at least one more time. And I think everybody should come to the fourth or whatever it is, prepared to talk about specifics. And we should be prepared for a long meeting. I think we really need to wait into that on the fourth and then we have a public meeting the 12th and then we have a work session. And I think that the work session would be a good time to do follow-up on the things that come up in the public meeting.
And we've had a public hearing for the planning commission where things were brought up and changes were made as a result of that, so... There's already been revisions from what planning commission recommended based on public hearing, but certainly the red, the public is entitled to provide additional
So we have really bounced it around. My point is, we need to...
Red and I have been working on it a year.
My idea, but we have.
Right, right, right. No, no, and that's good, that's good perspective. Because I'm thinking, if I read it again, I'm gonna go cross-eyed, but...
Well, you don't need to read it. I'll talk about it, I'll talk about the rest of it.
The only challenge from my standpoint is, we're probably lost. I'm trying to prepare for the September 1st community day at the pool. I mean, there's a lot going on. I want to dig into it too.
Well, we gotta, we gotta talk about it.
Oh, I know, I'm not saying we don't talk about it.
The only time we got to talk about it, you know, we, we don't really, at the public meetings, the way the public hearings, there hasn't been a whole lot of discussion and debate.
You know what, you're absolutely right. I was even thinking about our committee too, that now, now's the time of council too to bring up comments. Um, you know, we need this document. We just need it to look the way you want it to look, so...
I mean, we've all got a copy. Yvonne, I guess you distributed copies to everybody.
Yes.
Couple, a month ago. But we really need to just get the word out. I'll send an email, an email out to everybody. If you're in agreement that we should do that, I'll send an email to everybody and ask them to be sure they read it and prepare the questions for the September 4th meeting. And we'll talk about September 4th and we have a public hearing and the business session will try to kind of...
Hit it again.
We should somehow.
Yeah. My sense is, is we talked about it on the fourth public hearing, we talked about it again in work session, have another public hearing. My hope would be that we could pass something in October, the first meeting in October, because even if we pass it, then we got thirty days after that till it's effective, correct?
Right.
And I don't want to, I don't want to make it sound like I'm rushing this, but I don't want it to linger longer than it needs to when...
Well, I mean, that's why I'm suggesting, really.
And can it be amended during those thirty days of wait period?
No, that means it's passed, it's passed, but it can't go into effect for thirty days and wouldn't use the emergency clause on this.
Okay.
That's another thing, Marie asked me about this and I agree, I've brought this up before in the past, is, you know, with the percentage of things we do that are emergencies or suspend the rule. I mean, I remember watching council on years ago on TV and, and most of the things were, this is the first reading, this is the second reading, you know? We've gotten into the habit and there's practical reasons, but I, and if we have to do it, we have to do it. What I don't want to have happen, and I know this has happened sometime, is we wait too long as a body to do something until we've, we're facing a deadline, you know, where we have the opportunity to get on things. And, you know, we talked about calendar, there've been discussions about, we've discussed about annual calendar, we put that together, just kind of remind us, there are, there's some things that you don't know are gonna come up, they just come up. But there are other things that happen same time every year, you know, the budget. Do June 1st, for good or for bad. You know, there's, there's, you know, we've got landmarks. And I think, and these things all sneak up on me and I'm sure, like they have, I think we ought to get together, I don't know, a type of committee or maybe, I don't know, maybe laws and rules committee, maybe we could...
I just went through, I just went through the, the emergencies since January, the first one through and it's an in order amount. I mean, I was baffled.
Well, I, it made me wonder about what, what it stands for. Either it's misnamed or it's partially misused, I mean...
Because emergency, I have a pretty good idea for emergency, it's a dire situation, do or die.
That's the problem.
And that's, and I don't think some of these things were do or die things and I think they are misnamed.
That's the problem. The emergency name, I had this come up when I was on laws and rules on first going counselors, people that were concerned about that. And that's how you have to think of it. Don't think of it being an emergency as we think of an emergency. That is the name that is given, that we have to pass something in less than the thirty days because of, of a time constraint. But I agree, the emergency name is what, it's not dire.
Well...
But that's the name it has. I think we have to be just better about realizing that, that that's not what it stands for. It doesn't mean it's, it's an emergency in the fact that...
We're not calling 911.
Yeah, exactly. But it's something that is, time is of the essence.
I understand it's a tool. What I'm saying is, I agree with Marie, you know, I, I can't believe that all these, you know, the rules were set up to have a first reading and a second reading.
Yes.
Go into effect for thirty days for a reason. That was so that you had time to think about it, to discuss it, to take input, you know, people in the, in the community had time to talk about it, things like that. And, you know, that, that's why it was done. But it's not happening that way. And it, I just can't believe that, you know, we have to, almost on every, on almost every piece of legislation, we have to get it into effect for the thirty days.
You know, I...
I don't really know what's wrong, to tell you the truth. I don't know why we...
And I'm not sure anything is wrong, quite frankly. I, anything that I have felt could, we could leave the emergency clause off, I did. I, I think, and I'm happy for, at a work session, let's just take them one by one and go through, because I, I think there are a lot of them that, you know, any of our grant money, things like that, there's, those are deadlines we set, you know? And you can, I started keeping emails to show when we first got it and when we have to give it done, that, you know, there's just not the room there, the budget, that's been an ongoing one. You know, you don't get your material...
No appropriation has the emergency clause in it.
Well, right, anything money related. But, you know, the tax, the fact that we can't get the tax budget out soon, we don't have the information for the tax budget sooner. But I, I, I'm happy to go item by item. Our healthcare was one that I told you, you know, we can't do that. They don't put the bids out on the healthcare any sooner. You know, I, I couldn't mind looking at that because I think there's a lot of misnomer on, it was overused. I've tried to not use it anywhere we could.
That's all I'm really suggesting is, let's make a conscious effort to apply that when we really have to apply it and not apply. And if we do have to apply it because something stood by us, let's make a note of it and make sure that it doesn't happen again, particularly if it's kind of a predictable or an annual event.
And perhaps also use it as a thematic kind of tool when we're on the way across to let people know why we're doing it.
I typically try to say, if we're using the emergency clauses, do we need a timeframe for a contract or it's a matter of public safety? I try to do that.
I, I like the idea of Yvonne at least going over, I don't know, six months or a year and looking at it, just because what goes out to the community. I, I was in the same boat before I got on, I hear emergency, emergency. And I remember even Greg laughing one day that this was an emergency. And, and it was, I guess. But I don't, I think that we need to look at them and have a little bit of list...
Why don't we have laws and rules work on this if, rather than the manager, I think that's a more appropriate one for her.
Well, if she has the information.
I'll get the data.
She would have to get the data for that.
You know, again, something like a bid that would go out, you may have thirty days to approve it. If you don't put the emergency clause on, you're gonna fall out of your thirty day window. You know, and each of them will have some pretty good, it's a timeframe issue.
Most stuff we do, we can't, we can't make it on that. But there's, there's times when we should do.
I, I agree. I, I don't think we should ever abuse it if it's not needed. I just would like to see a list because this has come up multiple times and I know it's worth it, but, but let me finish. That way we can have it in front of us and we can see if it's legitimate or not and put it to rest as much as we can.
I don't want to generate any work for Yvonne or anybody else. All I want to do is be, I, I figure I'd be conscious of this. And it sounds like Yvonne's already conscious of it. And I, and, you know, and when Marie asked me about it, I'm thinking to myself, you know, I remember being concerned about this when I was first on council, but then you just kind of roll with the flow, you know? And I don't really question it anymore. But I'm not sure that, I don't think that's the right approach either, so... I guess all I'm really asking for is maybe a heightened sense of, heightened sense of, 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 of notice, of, of realization of what these situations are and, and if it's something that we should have not had to do an emergency clause on, let's either not do it or do something different the next time it comes up, that's all. I don't really want to have, I don't know, for Yvonne, if you think it's important to handle this, that's okay. I, I, I don't know that making a list with accomplishments. I think we already know that there's a high percentage of emergencies.
I think it's a good idea. And the reason I say that is, I don't, I think we're very fragmented. We have, you know, these discussions going back and forth. Sometimes it looks like one person's acting like a council of six. I don't think we get unified just for the heck of being unified. But this has been around long enough that I think, because what happens, if we should, if we didn't dig deeper into this conversation, we just let it set, the message that goes out to people is, oh, they're doing the emergency clause and they don't have to. Because if we didn't counter that, knowing some of the facts behind it, and, and maybe, maybe it's not true, but I think it would finally put it to rest and say, here, you know, if you can point out any one of them that didn't have to be done on an emergency, I think we should put it on the people.
Let me, let me do this as the acting mayor this evening. We've passed thirty-seven ordinances this year, I believe. So I'm gonna turn this over to laws and rules to look at. And if they want to list the thirty-seven and say, ten of them were finance things and there was no emergency clause because there can't be, or, or let them try to define, I, I think we know the general scope of what the conversation is. Let them define if they think that there's a problem and if there's a task that they'd like the manager to do, bring the task back to council and recommend that they do it. And if, if laws and rules reports back and says, hey, we've looked at this matter, here's what we found, we need to be cognizant of it, there's no other action to be taken, then, then so be that, or any place else. But it's... I think it's a good idea. And I think it's probably a good time for another reminder, like I said, as I had done, to also explain just a bit that emergency is the term that is used here in council, but it is not 911. But that is the proper term that's used. But it doesn't mean that it's an emergency that we pass the grass cutting bill. While the term is emergency, but...
Because I, I think if, last comment, sorry, if it's state law and if there's something broken, we, granted, we won't be changing state law very easily, but at least we should voice our opinion out there going, why do you have this kind of language in there?